All right, let's see if we do have something that we'd love to go to at 10 o'clock. So let's see if we can get going. Let's begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we thank you this day, Lord, to come here and represent you, Lord, doing the county business. I pray, Lord, that you will bless us. Lord, to give us the knowledge and wisdom to take care of this business, Lord, in the best of our abilities, Lord. Pray you'll be with all the travelers this weekend, Lord, and be with the first responders, Lord, in our county. These things we ask in your name, Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I assume you had your recorder.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, our final meeting of the month of May on a special Friday because of the Monday Memorial Day holiday. So it is the 24th of May, 2019, and it's just after 9:00, and we're taking care of our second meeting of the month today. Item number one is opportunity for public comments, requests for information, non-agenda items. All right, we'll move on apparently then. Item number two, considering possibly approved, the minutes from our last meeting, and that was not quite two weeks ago, on May 13.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes?
Motion's made to accept those minutes by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Item number three is our time to report on Commissioner's roadwork status. I'll begin down with precinct number four today.
We've been picking up a lot of trees. We've had several down and been trying to replace some culverts that have stopped up or washed out. Had another one that washed out one day this week on 4275, and we are going to try to replace it first of this next week. We've got it temporarily fixed where we can do that, and still trying to get some roads prepared to do some seal coat.
What roads would that be, just for anybody curious that's watching?
Forty, forty, let me think a minute, 4315 and 3155, working on both of those. We've got through side cutting, fixing, start cleaning ditches and all on them, so.
When do you expect to seal coat?
I'm looking probably the latter part of June, first of July.
Okay, month, month and a half.
Yeah.
All right. Let me remind everybody, we're doing good on our microphones, just try to keep them, you know, a hand width away. Commissioner, precinct three, Applewhite.
Well, we've been, like I said, picking up a lot of trees and I've been putting a few culverts in and just trying to, a lot of patching. They got a lot of holes out these roads, and it's just a never-ending job. And I want to appreciate, tell Chief Ingram, Sheriff Ingram, appreciate him for coming out and picking, doing potholes for us and come up there and maintenance barn and get all the tires loaded in the trailer. I appreciate you doing that for us.
Great. Anything else?
No, sir.
Commissioner Fitch, precinct two.
Went out and crews helped do some seal coating in precinct one. It also boarded precinct two on 1220 and 1250. Looked really good, and we had a lot of storm damage last Saturday night. We hauled off 10 dump trucks full of trees so far. We still have a little bit more to clean up, and we've been patching, of course, after these heavy rains, doing some mowing and prepping the roads 2710, 2720, and 2715, so we can be ready for some seal coating in June. Got two big culverts to replace, one on 2710 and one on 2600, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Precinct one, Commissioner Riddle.
We have, we completed seal coating, 4.9 tenths miles of road, and spent the entire week last week doing it with the help of the other three precincts, and thank everybody, but we had a good crew, and I think they did a great job. They worked hard, and I appreciate everybody's help, and it worked fine.
All equipment worked well?
All equipment worked well. We've got one problem with that chipper, and that's a real problem, but we, that thing, we don't even know when it, it's not on the inventory in the books. But one of the things about it, now, we're all worried about following the motor carrier rules here on the thing, that thing is 15 foot wide, and we move it around the county, and you haul it, you must have an escort, so we're going to buy an escort. I have to hire an escort in front of it, in the back, and the sides, and then you've got to file with the state. I was in the motor carrier business. If you've got an oversized load, you have to file and tell them the routes you're going to run. So we're going to follow the motor carriers, and this later on here, we need to buy, start making arrangements to buy, I think we need to buy a smaller chipper. The new chipper suck in, down to nine foot, but this thing is, and I've priced some used ones, and they've got them, you know, 130,000, 40,000, 100 used ones, that will do that. But as long as we got this 15-foot, we've got a real problem. It's dangerous. It's extremely dangerous, and it needs to be replaced. And if we're going to seal coat, we're so far into buying seal coat equipment, I think that we're almost forced to do something about it.
We need to replace it because of its width, or it's having some problems?
Yeah, it's having some problems.
Okay.
It's got some, in other words, it, go ahead.
Those newer ones will go up to 20 feet, so we could do some single passes.
They got to go to 24 foot, you can do it in rums instead of going down twice. But anyway, that's just, that's just, that's another subject altogether, but it needs to, it's going to have to be addressed.
Is it breaking down some?
It does. It spits out too much rock. We picked up five or six loads of excess rock out of the thing because it would, the switch was broke. They got it in the shop now.
What does that chipper do?
You put the hot oil on the road, you get the road prepped and get it, all the stall spots fixed, then you put the hot oil. It's literally hot, and we got an adjustment on the sprayer on the oil truck, oil trailer, and then you drag, put the chipper over it.
The chipper's what distributes the little pieces of rock?
The rock, yeah. In other words, you take a dump truck, they take it up, back it up to that chipper and start, and raise it up, and then the chipper starts spreading it out, and then we follow up with a roller on that, and then it's sealed, or the oil seals it. But that's the, and it would dump too many rocks sometime, and then it's only narrow, it only does like 10 foot. So if we've got a 20-foot road, it's okay, but we have, most of our roads are 18 to 15 foot, and then we have to go down the middle and then come back up the other side, got an overlap in the middle. So it wastes a little material, plus it's just, like I said, it's not on the thing. And the only person that I knew to ask was Bobby Tosh at precinct two. He's operated the thing since we got him, everybody tells me, and he said it was our early 80s, and that we had that thing. It's not on the inventory, equipment inventory.
Okay.
But it's a real problem, and.
So that's something to talk about, budget time is a new one to, that'll solve our width problem, and that'll give us better distribution, and it'll give us a wider swath?
Yeah, you can set the others. Well, they got one.
We make it through the season with it.
I don't, yeah.
It does some weird things.
Yeah, we, I don't know whether we should wait.
Well, do we need to replace it before the season's over?
I think we do.
I think so. If it ever breaks down, if it tears, rips another belt or something, it's going to cost more to fix it than it's worth. If we have it working, and.
Well, y'all put together, put together a plan, and let's get it done. I want to put that on the agenda to consider.
We need to start looking for one. We're already looking.
All right. And the term we use is a chipper. Is there a more technical name?
No.
All right. Thank you all. Item number four, considering possibly approved, Titus County CDL Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy and Procedure. What did you all learn yesterday, and are we ready to approve this policy?
I'll tell you, I can't, to approve this policy is absurd, as far as I'm concerned. This thing, everything that this guy uses is a Federal Motor Carrier Safety Association, and it's very clear in here what it is. We're just going out of our way, and I know why we're going out of our way, Texas Association of Counties, who we pay money to, they lobby against us, they don't want to lower our property taxes, they got spending big money, getting commissioners to come pay, and then they don't want lobbying money to be spent, they want lobby money, taxpayers' money to be spent. So we pay them to represent us, to lobby against lowering our property taxes. So they're, here they're creating another department down here, Risk Management, and they come up, that's how bureaucrats in Washington, those departments get so big, they've added this one, and they've took the Federal Motor Carers, if you can read the Federal Motor Carers items here, and it tells you everything, and everything's about a carrier for hire. It says, "The Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration has issued regulations which require, this is on the county, trucking companies, motor carriers." It's for hire people, and we've used every one of them in this Titus County policy. All we've done is copy this thing, and I think it's absolutely absurd. You can call, text on it, the license people. If you get a license, you don't need a drug testing, you don't need to go through all these procedures, you don't have to do anything. We can have a policy, and I think we should have a policy, and I think we do, to test somebody when we hire them. The Motor Carrier Association says if you have a wreck, you've got to immediately send that driver to the, but every word in here, if you read the thing, is the driver, the driver. And our guys can go weeks without driving a truck, or a commercial truck, and we don't need, we only have, all of our dump trucks are 26,000 pounds or less, and you don't need a CDL unless it's 26,001 pound. And it's just, I think it's absurd for us to put the county and spend, I think we're wasting the taxpayers' money by having this policy with all these drug paraphernalies. It tells you all about it, but it's all about drivers, truck drivers, safety on the highway. We don't go on the highways. We don't make a log book. There's tons of rules in here that we have, that the motor carriers have to do, but we don't, if we're going to follow them, let's follow all of them, that means we've got to have a log book. You've got to have them seven days before you can dispatch a driver. He has to have a drug test. You have to have a random drug test, and it's just, we don't, we're not required to do that as a county. That equipment we operate's too. It's a total, it's just absurd for us to put the county into the position of following all of these motor carrier rules.
My impression of this was, this is way overkill. I thought so too. I don't know where there's a happy medium, but did we, did I understand that we have to have a policy, not necessarily this policy, to utilize that third-party drug testing company? Is that right?
We have, yes.
But we don't have to have this thick onerous document, do we?
We don't have to have a third-party drug, a motor carrier, a company either. We can, we can have our, if we have a rule, I think pre-employment, we should have a rule, and I think we should have a rule if we suspect that people are on drugs, and we can take them. We can get them drug tested, and I know that we have that ability. I guess in Preford, sir, there, this clinic up here, and I think that we should have that as a rule, even though it's in here, it's required in the motor carriers, but it's not required, but I think as a policy of county, we should have that policy. There are some other things that we should have that's involved in this policy, I think, but they're not, to follow that Federal Motor Carrier Safety Association thing is, I think is, I think is, it's just, well, it's just not necessary.
Any other thoughts on this?
Would DPS have any information about this? Will you talk to them maybe?
Yes, indeed. We'll ride down here, I talked with this lady down here, this happened, this come up first time, and yep, you can get a driver's license or a P, you're not required drug test, you're not required physically, and that's what some of our drivers have. Then I finally got ahold of somebody, took several calls to get ahold of DPS in Austin, and finally got ahold of a lady, and she, most people didn't know about it, and she told me, she told me the same thing I'm telling you, you don't have to have that. You're not required to have that to operate in a city, as long as you got that, the CDL. You can have a CDL, they put an eye on it, or a P on it, you don't have to do anything, but you're not, can only drive a government vehicle, government-owned vehicle.
Have you looked at our policies? Do you feel like it's adequately covered in there, or do we need to supplement, expand that?
Oh, it's got, it's got stuff in it, it's about 90%.
No, I don't mean this one. I mean our current county policies.
No, I have, and I fully intended to do.
Well, I'm perfectly in favor of whittling this down to where we can do what you guys think we need to do with our drivers, give us the right to drug test them when we have suspicion, and to be able to, do we need random drug testing?
We're not required to. We could, but we don't have, we're not, and to, you're a small trucking company that have consortiums that you can do it. I had a small trucking company, and I had to draw to one, they did other companies, but I didn't sign a contract with them. They had an office in San Antonio, one in Dallas, and I did, and I used it, but I only had five trucks at least, five year or so, and I had to use them for drug testing, it required them random. Judge, if you're going to do the random drug testing, you do have to have a contract, I mean, because somebody's got to pick how you're randomly doing it, and that's what we hired that company. That's what we were going to enter that contract.
Right.
If you're not required to do random drug testing, you need to decide if you want to do it or don't want to do it. If you want to do it, you're going to have to have somebody randomly pick them.
Wait a minute, I couldn't hear you.
Well, if we, if we are going to do the random drug testing, I think you're going to have to have a company hired to randomly pick the people, or some, you've got to have some system in place where it's going to be random.
I don't think, I don't.
But I'm not saying you even have to do it.
We don't, we don't have to have random drug testing, and we, and I don't think we could, we should.
Yeah.
I think, but I think we should have the ability.
To test somebody if you're there.
Somebody comes in.
That's different, that's different than random.
That's right. That's a totally different thing, and I think we should have that as a matter of policy too, that we should have that ability if comes in spinning like a brewery, you know what I mean, and slop, slurr, in his words, I think we ought to have the rights to send him to get a drug test.
When the information that you had was submitted, we made a general request that they was applying this information for a CDL policy, but I do believe that if the courts can, like, take the leases that they feel attribute and build their own policy, I don't think it has to be the policy that was, those words were available, submitted. That was just samples of information that you can pull together to create a policy. I think there's so much in there, and the DAPs just request that you have a policy, and it needs, and there's the criteria in the contract of the things that we need to set you need in there. And my understanding was you simply the 15 points, so all of the information that we received or reviewed wasn't necessarily what they were saying you needed in the policy. I just wanted to clarify, that was just information, so that we could extrapolate what we wanted as a county audit, as our law forward, there may be information in there that isn't relevant to our county. I just wanted to let you know that that information that was pulled in.
All of the information in this policy that we prepared here is drivers, 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 which is exactly what I've lived with for the last, I've never had another job in all my life, and you have to have these rules and regulations. I was audited twice since I moved in my house down here. By the Department of Public Safety has a department that audits trucking companies, regulated motor carriers, and they do it, and I've been audited twice in the last.
Can I interrupt just so that I'm clear? There are counties that pull their own programs. I mean, they don't have to be audited or thrown in to do it. They do that so that they have an independence, and no employee can ever say that the county's silencing them, so that's why they outsource it. It's just to protect the integrity of the citizens, so they're the one person within the county that's violating, so that's why you know it's going. It's not, I just said that, it's not important.
That, and they're not pulled in as dolphin. You're put in a, you're put in a pool, and you may not have over one or two drivers a year that has to go for random. If you do it in-house and you've got 16 people, then you've got, you're going to have somebody every time you turn around going for a drug test.
You're only, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, the Federal Motor Carrier, only 25% have to be of drivers, truck drivers. We're talking about freight companies, trucking companies. 25% have to be randomly drug tested. Not, not all your employees have to be drug tested.
No, I didn't say all of them had to, but.
Well, you said 16.
I said we've got 16 employees, and so.
Somebody going all the time. I thought you said that, but anyway, and that, but that's not, that's not necessarily right, because you're only required to randomly drug test 25% of your drivers if they were trucking. In our case, that'd be four a year. In our case, and that would be four a year if we did it ourselves.
Well, do we have to hire a company to do that?
No.
And we just do it ourselves? We just draw for them?
You have, you have to make sure you did it in a way that was totally random.
Drawn or something?
Yeah, draw them out of a hat.
And those CDL Class A drivers, they drug test them when they do that physical every year, don't they?
No.
Is that not part of it? Drug test totally separate from that?
No.
So different. And don't think we can get by with just random with reasonable suspicion? We thought we needed somebody drug tested that was having problems? They don't have to necessarily be a driver, they could be somebody that just does their mowing for us, part-time guy or something?
The thing that might come into play that I was wanting to be, is if our insurance premiums are going to be different if we don't put that in place. And I don't know if that's true or not.
As of now, we don't know, we don't think so.
I think if you define your policy as it fits into your county, that was a template for you to work off of. If you go to an outside agency, they have a specific criteria, they request for you to have a way to deal with your random, and to do it. That's the only difference. I mean, it's your choice whether you go outside or out.
Or if you do it.
Yeah, why don't we, we don't have to elect to even have a drug alcohol policy for CDL drivers extra.
That's right.
So we could just table it, and if we have to for insurance purposes, then we could come back to this at a later time?
You could talk to your tech. I mean, I would assume it's kind of like if you have a swimming pool, if you have a fence around it, then the premiums are going to be less. If you don't have a diving board, you can have whatever you want, you're just going to pay a little different premium if you don't do it. That might not be the case, that may not change our premium at all if we don't have random drugs here. I don't know. We would need to ask them a question. Hey, you gotta see how much money you're, you know, $200 a year, you might not think it's worth it.
This question worked for us because of the contractual agreement with the third party, so we were just trying to get everything in line in order to do that. When we get to our run laws analysis every year based on our liability coverage in that county, there's specific criteria that they look at, the policies and stuff that you have in place. So we get a report, and it identifies things that we need, we could, we need, or you should just depend to improve upon, like Carl said, for our rate. So this is one of the ones that's what was planned. They went out, they looked at possibility in the program, they were decision to do the program. Once the program was decided to be done, Mr. Parkin, he went out, started researching, and then now we're here today because the third party has decided to be committed. And then if you decide what items you need to replace in order to do that, and if you're going to go outside. So I think it.
Totally, y'all would still. The Federal Motor Carrier says specifically that you, that companies say they're qualified and things, that you should check with your state, because a lot of companies present themselves as being supposed to do that, and they do not, they are not qualified, and there, there's a drug, I mean, a website here, you can test them to see if they are. But they report to the people that, they try to sell you their services, and they're not on the, it says nobody can buy their service, and that doesn't make the people in the state have said anything.
Okay, well, y'all decide what you want to do. For now, let's table this.
Make a motion to table.
Motion's made to table by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, tabling item number four regarding drug and alcohol testing policy and procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, discuss Cookville Volunteer Fire Department with possible action. I don't want to make a big deal out of this. I just want to remind you of the problems we ran into in Winfield that ultimately resulted in the closure of that department, and I want to keep you all as informed as I am kept informed by Chief McCray when we are having issues with any of our volunteer fire departments. I don't know if this is a temporary problem or not. I've given you copies of Cookville responses for incidents there since the first of the year, even though it says 1-1 of 2020, that means 1-1 of 2019. I don't know why we have that wrong date on there, they just got an extra year on there. But as you can see, there's been several runs that were, or excuse me, several incidents, and no one was able to report from Cookville. I don't think this is a matter of them not paying attention or not wanting to make the run. I think they simply are short on people, and the people that they do have have other jobs. Very similar situation that we've discussed multiple times before. I just don't want a bigger problem to arise where you haven't been kept informed, so anytime Chief McCray lets me know of a concern, I'm going to pass that on to you. I did call Wesley McCollum and just said, hey, what's going on there? Kind of give me an update, and would you like to address the court? They've got, he had something going this morning and was not able to be here, but I did get an email from him, and again, did have a conversation with him. He is not telling me that the department is closing or anything. He has indicated that he will be turning over the reins as chief to someone else after they have an election that should be in the coming weeks. His response by email a couple of days ago, "We had four separate incidents in the last two days. We had people at each one, except for a power line down that NorTech's covered for us. This was because we had three lanes of traffic on 67 blocked by a downed tree. I made a call to stay with traffic control via the likelihood of loss of life was much greater. Today, Friday, is a busy day for me. We've got a pre-planned appointment to help give safe passage to carry the load. We start at the Morris County line and we'll end at the Loop. This is a half-day segment. Doesn't mean we don't want to be here, we just have that arrangement already planned. I don't have any excuses for the lack of responders. We have a couple of new members and an old member that is coming back on board. I feel in the months to come, new life will be infused into the department, and we'll be back at the top of our game. When there's a heightened awareness of activities or a scare of potential fire, it seems like we have plenty and sometimes too many responders. When the rain stops, and when the rain stops. When the rain stops and, when the rain stops, then our community will perceive fear of loss. If the county feels, let's see, if the county is concerned, do what you need to do. Texas A&amp;M Forestry Service has a program that we send our information into. This program will also give an average cost of run per volunteer fire department." So, I mean, he understands that if they're, or I think he perceives that if they're not able to meet their run commitment, that they, you know, we would consider defunding the department. I did not threaten that at all, don't intend to, but, you know, obviously at some point if a, if a department ceases to function like Winfield did, then we have to take other drastic measures. He is saying that's not the case here. Give us a little time to rebuild. So at this time, unless there's any action you want to take, I don't know that we need to take any action, but that is for you to decide. You can see the, the numbers here and you've heard the response.
I thought we, I mean, I don't know anything about it, but I know we took more than half of their area and give it to, created that Argo Fire Department.
Yeah, and several of the, the Cookville members went to the Argo Department. That's been part of their problem, is the transfer of those guys to Argo when we split that department. So yes, good, good comment that I forgot to mention. All right, if there's any other comments or questions about that, I'll get you some answers, but otherwise, I'm not looking for any action today and let's, I'll continue to keep you informed on the, on status there. All right, any action? I'm assuming no. We will move on. And item number seven, consider and possibly approve the renewal of our commercial package insurance policies. These are the policies that we have currently with Texas Association of Counties. It is time for renewal. As you'll recall, that if we go with TAC, the, you know, going out for bid requirements are satisfied by utilizing the TAC pool. And so the question here is, do you want to maintain, retain, continue to go with Texas Association of Counties on our package policy coverage? Do you feel like it's time to pursue other quotes? Have you gotten any renewal numbers for us yet at this point? I know that there's, there has been, there has been some increases because the cost of insurance has gone up. They made a specific trip up here to talk to me about that.
We added, we added mobile equipment.
Yeah, we added all that mobile equipment that had previously not been covered, that Nanette brought to our attention. We did that a couple of months ago. We added a drone for the sheriff's office that has some liability to it and therefore some rate increase. So, it's what?
The, the cost for the coverage that was drawn out of cover as far as the...
Thirty-eight thousand as compared to what before? Thirty-six thousand, so $2,000 increase in our coverage. And just to review, this covers all of our rolling equipment, our road equipment. It covers all of our automobile policy, no?
There's two different policies. This policy is real property under the real policy, it's all on real estate.
All the buildings, the aircraft.
That's what I'm calling it.
Okay, so the mobile equipment. And then all, all the auto coverage is on a separate policy. So this covers the buildings that we own, it covers this drone, and it covers the recently added rolling stock. So considering all those hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars worth of equipment that we added to it, a $2,000 price increase, really not too bad?
I agree with y'all a little bit, I know there was some things that...
I've certainly been pleased with TAC's coverage, the way that they handle their business and attempt to support us in any way that we need. I would recommend that we continue with TAC.
I make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to renew our commercial package insurance policies with Texas Association of Counties.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to go back to the six?
Yeah, I missed six.
Yes, I sure did. Okay. Our first meeting of the month of June is on Monday, June 10th. That is the day I am flying back from overseas on vacation. I definitely won't be there on that Monday. So the question is, and I'm hoping to be back on Tuesday. Two years ago when I did this, I got held up in the London Airport and I was a full 24 hours late. So anything can happen. I don't, I wouldn't plan for that, but anything could happen. So, do you want to consider bumping the meeting until Tuesday, the 11th? Or would one of you like to run the meeting that I promise I will keep short and sweet as I possibly can? You didn't hear any of that. But, question is, Monday, the 10th, our meeting. I will not be here. I'm coming back from overseas vacation and I hope to be here on Tuesday morning, the 11th. Or would you like to, I was even thinking you running the meeting on Monday, the 10th, and it will be a short meeting because I'm not gonna put much on there?
I don't have a problem moving it myself. You want to move it or do it on Monday?
I would love for one of you to do it on Monday, but I'm not...
We'll do it on Monday.
Okay with y'all?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You gonna let me be in charge?
Darn right.
Can I wear your robe?
Yes, you can. You can sit in my chair, talk to my mic.
It's a done deal.
All right, thank you very much. Item number eight, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion to approve our oral and written reports.
Motion to approve this report is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Make a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 10 is approve budget amendments, if any.
No, sir.
There are none today. Item number 11, sign pay orders, approve payment of bills.
Make a motion, pay them.
Motion is made.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, closing comments. Special meeting today on Friday, recognition of Memorial Day on Monday, for which we are granted a wonderful three-day weekend holiday. We last Friday had a recognition ceremony at the Chamber of Commerce where Steve Austin was there and presided over a new, I'm gonna call it a monument. If you haven't seen it, right out there on the front lawn of the Chamber of Commerce, pretty well directly in front of their front door, out there in the right-of-way grassy area, it's pretty nice. Oh, probably three foot by three foot, Blue Star Memorial. Today is another celebration. This one is going to be, where, is it out, is it out?
Out for our veterans.
This, this side, I'm getting mixed up here. It's right out here on this side and that's gonna begin at 10 o'clock, so we'll be able to attend that. Steve Austin, just for your information, is undergoing some cancer treatment. He began that this week and so he's gonna be feeling not too good probably for a little while, so just remember him in your prayers and hopefully they get, they get him taken care of and cured. So I don't think he's gonna be in attendance today. Signatures there. What else, if anything? That's all that I have. Commissioner Riddle, do you have any comments today?
No, I, I have a copy of the federal motor carriers. If somebody would like, it's only about three, four pages. If anybody wants a copy of it, I'll...
Well, and also if any of you want to get with Nanette, you have those 15 points that are mentioned by that third-party company that we need to work into. Well, I'm just saying that. I'll let them contact you if they would like to see that and if they desire to pursue building a policy to, to address random testing and drug testing. Okay, Commissioner Fitch, any comments?
I just want to say, compliment all the guys on the, in the county, on the road crew, just about everybody has worked doing that chip sealing in one day or another if they weren't busy. So most time we have 12 or 13 out of the 16 and man, they work together like clockwork. Everybody knows what they're doing. Pretty impressive. They've been doing so good.
How many?
Are y'all through with the recent point?
No.
Oh, we just got started waiting on the bills. We're just about, we have those also. See how much money we have.
We don't have to restock. We've been loading the gravel up.
Well, back on that new chipper bill, you know how long it takes to actually go from making a decision to having that equipment in use can be lengthy. And if we burn up too much of our season, according to you all, we could be jeopardizing ourselves. So if y'all, I'll put that on the next agenda to consider purchasing something like that. We may have to go out for bid there unless you use buy board, so you know the routine. Just keep that in mind.
Of course, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't let you do it, but anyway, they have a, this company that sells these oil trucks and most people have them. And they, I, I've, there's some on the website for offshore equipment, but this company that builds them, they have them, two or three, two or two, they have two, they have more than I have, but two, they, was interesting to me. And they want one, went from nine feet to eight feet. That would be, that was a range.
But it's, did it stand out? You can bring them in for road travel and expand on the road.
Yeah, they might actually nine foot wide. They, that, that one, that one, that was nine to 14. You don't have any? Rare. So, they're about $138,000, huge.
And how do you get it down here?
I, how, oh, I don't know. We have a roll ball. We could, we could pick it up. Get up, okay. They probably will, but they did the other vehicles we went. But they, they, and, and they have other brands, but very rarely, I mean, everybody that knows, they said, no, you don't want to get one of those. They dominate the market. It's the same company, build the trailer. And, and the machine we have now is made by E N.
Eckentire or something. Etnire.
It's the same company, they build oil trucks.
That's what brand we got now and things lasted forever. It's just served its purpose.
And I don't know, I mean, that's all I know about quality and stuff.
Well, here's what I would suggest maybe, since we can't take action today, but maybe between now and then, see if there are any other suppliers of that that we would consider using. Are you buying directly from the comp, from the manufacturer?
That's who I talked to.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not...
And RB Everett, we can check with them.
Well, find, find out who's, find out who possible suppliers are so that on June 10th, you could approve going out for bids. And we could obtain some bids from, from them and from other companies. You know, it's not purchase of that size, you gotta, we're gonna have to bid it.
We, they're part of the state bidding.
They're on buy board, most of those companies.
Oh, they are?
If I have one, we can buy it.
I have a, I have a copy of the price of, he said, a copy of each one.
So you think that Etnire, whatever it is, is on buy board? That would, that would work.
That would be a lot faster.
That'd be a lot faster. You could, yeah, you could buy it. You could approve purchasing that at that meeting. But I'll, I'll have that, that'll be one of the few items on that June 10th agenda. So if there's anybody else you want to, make, make, somebody make sure they're on buy board, that would enable you to work quickly.
Maybe this guy's a thousand, whatever you want, sometimes.
Do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just want to thank Sheriff Ingram again for his help. That, that helps a lot out there, patching and stuff. And I appreciate picking up trash. I appreciate them. And them tires, them boys were just, they were dirty.
How many tires were there?
I don't know. It was a semi, 53-foot truck.
Took pretty much all day to get it in there.
Yes, it did. And they, they was, they was...
Spotted it.
They were like, they'd run through the mud.
Good gracious.
But it's, we got, we, all we like now, Jeff's doing about, we got about 50 or 60 with rims on. They won't take the rims with the tires with rims because they are the rim, they'll take them. But Jeff, he's been, the last two mornings, he's been getting 10 at a time, doing it before he gets hot and he's gonna, I told him if he needed help, I would go down and help him get them off. Other than that, everything's okay.
Okay. Jimmy?
The only thing I've got is we're, myself and, and a couple of guys from Pittsburgh and a couple of other guys from town here are trying to get a benefit together for Brett Patty Thomas and Ashley Arbor. He's been in the hospital from that house fire for a little over 100 days now. And we're trying to get something worked up. We're gonna have a, we've got the hangar at Preford's set up for the 29th, to have it. We're having a, a meeting this Thursday night at Herschel's. If anybody would like to help with it or just come, got some ideas or whatever, we invite you to come and, and share those ideas and all with us. So, but we're gonna try to, try to, right now, we've got it set up unless something drastic changes. We've got it set up for the 29th of June. So, probably gonna be a barbecue and auction and, and that kind of stuff. If anybody would, would, know of anybody that would be willing to donate something or anything else, will contact myself or some of those. There'll be a Facebook, Facebook post coming out probably today sometime with the information and all of it, so.
One more thing I forgot, although the county did not have an election going on, our elections administrator, Pam Holmes, conducted the election on behalf of the school and the city and very, very few glitches there. I think she's doing an excellent job and she will get better with each election. I thought it went very smooth. The people that are, that took part as volunteers there were complimentary and we still have one more election to go. That's gonna be June the 5th.